Good evening and welcome to the Bennington Select Board Meeting of Monday, May 10. We thank everyone for your willingness to start a little bit later tonight. We appreciate the wonderful send off of the Bravo troop as they had for Kosovo for peacekeeping mission and the tremendous community support this evening. We also want to give special thanks to Mary Morrissey for her part in organizing the send off by the for the community. I'm Jeanne Jenkins, I'm Chair of this board and I'm going to ask my fellow board members to unmute themselves and introduce themselves, starting with Bruce.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting. Bruce Lee Clark.
Good evening, Gary Corey here.
Hello, everyone. I'm Jean Connor.
Good evening, everybody. It's Jim Carroll. Did you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we got you, Jim.
It's Sarah.
Good evening, Sarah Perrin.
Good evening, Tom Haley.
Excellent. Thank you all. We also have with us tonight Stu Hurd, who is our Town Manager, Dan Monks, who's the Assistant Town Manager, Josh Boucher from CAT TV, Nancy Lively, who always takes excellent minutes for us, and two special guests. We have for the COVID update, Dr. Trey Dobson, who's the Chief Medical Officer at Southwestern Vermont Medical Center, and Megan Harrington, who is the District Director for the Department of Health in Bennington. So my first order of business is to read the pandemic statement. And while I'm doing that, Dan, could we put up the the information on how to how to join the meeting? So due to the COVID-19 pandemic state of emergency declared by Governor Scott and pursuant to Addendum 6 to Executive Order 1-20 Act 92, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. There's no physical location to attend this meeting. Is there a way for us to put up the slide? Dan?
I'm almost there.
Okay, no problem, no problem. You can, if you want to just watch the meeting, you can view it on CAT TV, Channel 1085, or on CAT TV Facebook Live. If you would wish, if you wish to participate, you can join the meeting as an attendee and you can join by Zoom at the link listed right there. And you can find that link on the town website under Select Board Agenda. You can also dial in at 1-646-558-8656 with the meeting ID number of 894-48782346. So Zoom attendees can view the meeting, but they must be recognized to speak. If you are in the Zoom webinar, you can use the raise hand function. Sometimes it's hidden under the reactions button. If you are on the phone, you raise hand by pressing star nine. And then, once you're recognized by the chair, you can unmute yourself by pushing star six on the telephone. When you speak, you must speak, you must clearly state your full name and the town of residence. The call in information will be periodically posted on the screen and the process for calling in will be explained. If technology fails us, the meeting will be continued at a time and place to be determined. All votes that are not unanimous will be done with a roll call vote in accordance with the law. Okay? So, thank you for that. And thank you, Dan. So the first order of business is we have two agenda items to add. Between items five and six, we would like to add an Energizer update from Gary Corey. And then, just after the manager's report, we want to add an upcoming agenda. Item, okay? Six A and B. All right. Do, let's see, do I have a motion to add these agenda items?
So move.
Thank you, Bruce. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Jean. All right. Would everybody unmute themselves and all in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Thank you. Thank you. My apologies for that. So now, onto the agenda. Jean, I'm going to turn it over to you to read the town of Bennington's vision statement.
Sure. Bennington is a welcoming, engaging, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you. And so as we go through the meeting, we will keep that in the forefront of our minds. So, second agenda item is the consent agenda, including the minutes of April 26th and the warrants circulated for the purposes of discussion. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So move.
Thank you, Bruce. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jean. Please unmute yourself. Oh, wait. Any, any discussion? So everyone's questions on warrants and minutes been been answered? Yes? Right. Then, shall we vote on the consent agenda? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? All right. So, great. All right. So, let's move on to the COVID update. We have Dr. Trey Dobson and Megan Harrington with us tonight to let us know how things are going in the state and in our county. So I'll give it to you, over to you guys.
Great. Megan, you want me to start off and then we can tag team this a little bit? All right. So, thanks, everyone. Just, let me just ground us a little bit on some numbers. I know everyone looks at these numbers, but I like to start off any discussion. So, you know, it's been about 425 days since this pandemic was declared by the World Health Organization. And that's just a remarkable number to keep following. And yet, 145 days since we've been vaccinating in this state, which is also an incredible number. But the caseload right now has just continued to really decrease. And we don't anticipate, and I'll go into that in a little bit, and maybe Megan will as well, for this to be a sinusoidal type caseload anymore, at least in Vermont and areas where we have good vaccination. That's not the case in other parts of the country and other parts of the world. So I want to make sure everyone understands the difference there. But let me throw some more numbers out. So right now, in the US, we're losing about 700 people per day to COVID-19. That's an incredibly high number of people to be losing every day to a disease. So anyone who thinks it's stabilized and it's okay, it's not. To put this in comparison to influenza, usually we lose about 100 people per day due to the flu. Now, of course, it's not every day. That's just broken up over time because it's, you know, it's around 15,000 to 60,000 people die of the flu each year in the US. So seven times that number. That's just way too high. But as the numbers decrease and as vaccination increases, we anticipate those deaths to go down. What we are seeing, and you're reading about a lot, is this idea that maybe we won't reach a vaccination level that will completely eliminate or greatly reduce the prevalence of the virus. In other words, it'll still be with us. And that's, that's probably true. In fact, we've been saying that for a really long time. It's just kind of come out in the popular media. And we've learned to live with many other endemic diseases. There are lots out there. There's respiratory ones like tuberculosis. There's, of course, influenza. There's non-respiratory ones like HIV. And I think that sometimes we get a little complacent and think, well, that's okay. Well, it's not really. We need to continue to focus on protecting people. And that's where I get concerned about this vaccine hesitancy. We didn't have hesitancy for diseases like measles and, and other things that we seem to just say it's fine to vaccinate. Then all of a sudden, COVID has become this political, for some reason, disease, and that's divided people. So we need to work on that. That's another topic. But I think that we are starting to address it both at a federal level and a state level, and then certainly in the healthcare community. We're going to have to change our tactics. We're going to have to evolve, and we're going to have to be patient. We're going to have to let people know it's okay for them to change their minds. They may be pretty adamantly opposed right now. They start seeing friends and family, traveling. They start realizing, maybe it's not so bad. And we welcome them with open arms because truly vaccination is the only way to protect people. We won't get to a point where the virus isn't prevalent in the community. It'll, it'll be out there. So with that, let me just say the prevalence has decreased. We're pretty excited about that. We were talking in Bennington County about numbers just back in January of about 65 per 100,000. That's that rate we use. That's very high. We're down, you know, around 10 to 15 per 100,000, and it continues to decrease. So we have 55 days roughly until July 4th. And as, as Megan has pointed out before, and I've talked about, that really is this transition time from government mandates and requirements to people's own individual and family risk determination. And that actually should play out pretty well, I do believe. Where we're going to run into some problems are real public service areas such as hospitals and education. We'll have to figure out how to handle those. And then certain businesses, especially in the beginning, may be apprehensive to loosen some of their restrictions. Those are just growing pains and we'll get through them. And we'll have to understand that vaccination is really what's going to keep people from, from getting sick, including children. And unfortunately, if there's this idea out that kids don't get too sick, so it's not a big deal. So why vaccinate them? Because there's risk for the vaccination. And everything I just said to you is completely wrong. Kids do get sick. They have prolonged illness. They also spread it to adults, including vaccinated adults. And, and in fact, it's extremely safe. So to say that there are risks associated with vaccine, there are much greater risks commuting back and forth to work. And we all know that. It's just hard to understand that from a statistical, statistical, you know, understanding what you're doing to your family and your child does take some thought. But in reality, it's so much safer to get a vaccine than to get the disease. So just to finish up with what are we doing with vaccine, I think everyone saw that about an hour ago, the FDA did approve the EUA for Pfizer for administration to 12 years old and above. That still needs to go through the CDC, but they will approve it and will move forward. What we're really looking forward to is what's called a biological license, which is basically full approval, at least in 16 or above. And we hope that'll come within about 60 to 90 days. Hopefully 60. And that way, universities can really start mandating vaccine, just like they do many other vaccines prior to the start of school. And with that, we'll keep people in class. We will keep, keep people from getting sick and having to stay out, getting exposed and having to stay out. And I'll kind of stop there because you can see I want to go on and on about this. We do have plans, though, for 12 and above. The state has been working with us and, and our local health department, we believe will have clinics ready to go as early as next week. And of course, in all the pharmacies, they'll be able to administer to 12 and above as well, if they have Pfizer. So that's the difference. You know, it's only that one particular vaccine that's, that's been granted approval at this point. So I'll stop and let Megan add some things and then we can answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Trey. Yeah, I think what we've seen the last couple of weeks is this real pivot, I would say, a transition where we saw people banging down the doors to get their appointments, to get their vaccines. We're seeing clinics not as full. We're seeing demand kind of hit Peter out, which I think we're seeing across the country. So as excited as we are for our 12 to 15 year olds, and like Trey mentioned, we are gearing up for our community, our larger community style clinics to address those needs. We at the local health department level are looking at some creative ways to kind of meet folks where they are too. We're, we're highly aware of the vaccine hesitancy. We also want to recognize the complexity of people's lives too, and that getting a vaccine just isn't a top priority for some folks when they've got a lot of other things going on. So we've been working with some community partners, including STH, Head Start, as well as Shire's Housing, to identify some locations and some dates where we can set up shop and allow people to really walk out their front door and see a pop-up vaccine clinic that they can walk right into. So we've been really heavy on the registrations and appointments and, you know, our large community clinic model. So really excited over the next couple of weeks to explore, you know, where we can set up shop. So this Wednesday will be our first walk-in clinic. We'll be at Shire's house, or at, I'm sorry, Orchard Village Apartments in the community room in Bennington. We'll be there from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. We're hoping to catch people after work or after families have picked up kids from school. This will be a Pfizer clinic, but until we get that full word about the approval and everything from CDC, this will be just for 16 plus. So we're really excited about this opportunity. We have 50 walk-in spots. And we're excited to see how we're, how we're received and we hope that people continue to, to bang down the door for the, for those spots. And so, in addition, I should report too, I wasn't able to join the last one, but we did run a series of BIPOC-focused clinics in partnership with NAACP. We wrapped up those dose-two clinics last weekend. And we saw a great turnout from our BIPOC community members and their households and roommates and family members. So it was really exciting. We saw a little under 400 people come through those clinics. So really, really success. And I will stop right there. I can take questions.
Yeah, let me add.
Back over to Trey.
Yeah, I have one more thing to Megan's report. Excellent report there is, we, we expected to see slowdown. And it's actually, we're not celebrating enough what's going on in Vermont. I mean, do people, I don't think people realize 60% of Vermonters have had that first dose. And when I say that, I'm talking about all Vermonters, from babies who aren't eligible, you know, to adults. So 60%, we're going to capture another good 10%, maybe with the 12 and above. And then when it gets down to two and above or five and above, whichever comes first this fall, Vermont really will be in that level of immunization that, that people call herd immunity or protecting. And that's great. Unfortunately, many parts of the country will not be there. And, and hopefully, they will be at some point. But we do need to celebrate that. The media is appropriately kind of jumping on the fact, hey, vaccination is slowing down. And in Vermont, we want to say, yeah, what do you expect? We've gotten the groups that were at highest risk, and we can't even vaccinate 12-year-olds yet. So as soon as we do, it'll bump it up. It's really, it's really a good thing. And it actually means that we will be much safer than in other parts of the country.
Thank you. It's always, your reports are always so helpful in, in letting us know where we are and where we're headed. So Jim, you have your hand up.
I do. Dr. Dobson and Megan, thank you for being on tonight. I have a question for you. And I've spoken with one of your colleagues at the hospital who said that there was a possibility of extending vaccination days to a Saturday for those people who work in mills or other manufacturing hubs in, in the town. Is that true?
It is true. I, I want to be careful not to announce clinics until they're, until they're really set in stone. Because as, you know, Megan was, was mentioning, there's a clinic this Wednesday. But, you know, we, we work with the state. We have to wait till they allow us. But I can say, we are working on a clinic in the next couple of Saturdays, and I do believe it'll come to fruition. We're also working on a clinic that's going to be specific to the 12 to 18-year-olds. And again, that has to do with, you know, the need to use Pfizer. But moving forward, what the whole state is working on, and we are here too, is to remove the clinics and just have it as walk-in at particular sites. So pharmacies, you know, are a convenient place to go. Hospital systems are convenient places to go, and certain medical practices are also convenient. So I do imagine that with, you know, by the end of June, for sure, which is unbelievable, because that's only six weeks away, you could walk in on a Saturday to our express care here at the hospital, unannounced, and receive a vaccine and be on your way within, you know, 45 minutes. And to all the other, to many locations in the, in the town, like the pharmacies, maybe even the health department at times. We have to be careful, though, because the way these vaccines are packaged, they're still multi-dose vials as opposed to single-dose vials. So when you think about vaccination efforts from other types of diseases, those are typically single-dose vials. But let me just say, if every doctor's office had COVID-19 vaccine and a patient presented and they opened it up, there's about 14 doses in some of these vials. And that would mean 13 would go to waste. So at some point, that's actually, in fact, it's already happening and starting to become inevitable that there'll be some waste. And it's okay, but we want to be careful stewards, you know, for the whole world and making sure we're doing this in an efficient way that we can push vaccine to other parts. And I'm serious when I say that, out of the country and into places that, that need the vaccine. So, but to answer your question, Saturdays, yes, we've already run some Saturdays. The health department has run some Saturdays. We want to keep them going and do what we can.
Great. Jean, you're next. And I just wanted to say, if there are any attendees that have a question, you're welcome to raise your hand and we'll go to you as soon as we finish with select board questions. So go ahead.
Really quickly, just to piggyback on what you just said about the 14 doses in a vial, do you think that in the not-too-distant future, they'll start making single-dose vials?
I do. It's interesting that we haven't heard much about that effort. And I believe that is just, it is much more efficient for them to make multi-dose vials. But I do believe, especially with the second iteration of the vaccines in the late fall and early winter, we'll probably see some single dose. It's all, as you can imagine, complicated, has to do with supplies and, and resources to do it. And I wish it was here already, but it's not.
Right. And I have two, I have two questions. One's sort of personal, but we're all probably thinking about it. So we have our first trip planned, just to go to Chicago, non-stop flight. Feel okay about that. We're supposed to go to Italy in September. I don't think we're going to go. Would you go to Italy in September?
That's a, that's a tough one because it's really hard to predict right now what's going on. Let me just say this, travel, if you're vaccinated, is, is probably even safer than we're even pushing it out there. If you're traveling within areas that have a solid vaccination rate. If you're traveling in areas with poor vaccination rates, then it's not safe because you're being bombarded so frequently with the virus that eventually, you know, it could get past your protection. So I don't, I have not followed Italy's progression on vaccination.
Not good.
Okay. And I would wait. And I would just say, unfortunately, we're going to wait. Travel within the US to most US places right now is, is quite safe. And that's, then that's reassuring. That's a great thing that we need to be talking about.
Good. I think that's where we're leaning, especially because it's an art trip and Tony, Tony's taking like several people with him. So we're going to wait till the spring. My other question is, I have a friend, not here, who, I'm not sure where she's getting her information from, but she's very, very, very concerned about getting the vaccine and has not gotten it yet. Where should we send people? Who should they call to get accurate, good information to help them make a decision?
Yeah. Wow, boy. I think Megan and I could talk about this for a long time because there's some true psychology behind it. And when I say that, I don't mean pathology, or I mean, true psychology is, as you're talking with individuals. So your friend, for example, is probably an educated, well-thought individual who has read some things that are quite anxiety-provoking. And unfortunately, just not even based in biologic plausibility. So for some people, I would say they would go to simple sites such as CDC, the American Medical Association, and they would, they would read it and they would be very happy with that. Other people doubt those organizations. They have such mistrust, they don't want to read them. So it really depends on the individual. I think dialogue's important. And I'm happy to speak with people. They can talk with their provider and, and just talk through it. I like to listen to people, understand where they're coming from, let them know that, you know, they're not completely wrong. But that our experience is that vaccine has been given now to hundreds of millions of people. And they're doing so well, their chances of getting COVID-19 is extremely low, you know, down in the .008 percentile. And so this, or percent, and that is such good news. So if they were hesitant before, more power to them. They were thinking through it, but now it's so clear that, that it's safe, it's effective, thank goodness. And, and we can move forward and be comfortable. And I will tell you, if you start talking to them about how great it is to be able to travel again and go out and say, you know, you can just change your mind and get vaccinated, and you will be much safer. People listen to that.
Okay. I have had not, I've had no success, so.
Maybe they need time and they're just going to see that, how, how it's going. Unfortunately, if you don't get vaccinated, you will get COVID-19. And I say that, and I've said it here before, people look at me funny. It's, there are many viruses like this. We know this. Epstein-Barr virus, for example, is a ubiquitous virus that everyone gets by the time they're about 25 years old. And that will be the same thing with COVID-19 unless you get vaccinated. So you may say, that's fine, I'll risk it. But you're also risking, I don't know why you would want to risk it because there's long-term problems with it. But you're also risking giving it to someone else. And hopefully, that'll help people change their mind. You know, I have stories that start resonating with people. My, my son has a close, two friends that are on his ski team with him. They're both from Scandinavia. They got COVID-19, didn't bother them too bad. But now they can't keep up with my son. And it's because their exercise capacity has diminished because of this infection. That right there is pretty scary. Not everyone wants to be a national ski racer, but they do want to go out and play. They want to interact. They want to be able to work. They want to be able to stack wood. And if it's going to have that long-term problem, why not just get vaccinated?
We should definitely have people call you. You're very convincing, very convincing. So any other questions? Jim, I see your hand. Is that a new, new hand? Jim, your hand went away. All right. Any other hands? Either from? Jim, yes?
Yes. I just double-tapped on it. Doctor, you talked about your son and his friends that have experienced some deleterious consequences from COVID. Could you talk about the seriousness of those long-term effects? You know, I'm marginally aware of what happens physically. I'm quite aware of what happens to the lungs and that they become fibrotic. And there's, there's no repair of that. Is that, is that accurate?
I would say that there, there probably is some repairs, just really long-going. And for some people, it could be permanent. For some people, it could be a matter of months. And we, we actually are going to just have to follow people over time. We do know that the virus, as you said, causes some fibrosis that affects what's called the endothelial lining of blood vessels. Most of the other respiratory viruses do not do that. And when it does that, that can lead to permanent damage, much like cholesterol clots form in blood vessels and cause permanent damage. And that is one of the reasons why we see things like blood clots in patients that have COVID-19.
Can you describe some of the other effect, long-term effects for not getting vaccinated? Like, I've heard the phrase brain fog, and whether that fades away or doesn't?
Right. So brain fog is probably similar. It's probably due to small micro-infections in the brain. In other words, in the brain where there's damage to those blood vessels and they get small, tiny clots. And, and we've known about this type of brain fog from not COVID-19, but from people that get vascular dementia. So what happens is, over time, if you get lots of tiny little clots like that, it can eventually affect your, your brain's function and in a sense, in this situation, cause brain fog. It is probable that it's the same, same explanation in the lungs. Some people will experience it for just weeks to a few months, which in itself is terrible. I, I would never understand someone saying, well, that's not bad. But others, it could be more permanent damage. And we don't have ratios of numbers yet, but we probably will after about 18 months of the, of the pandemic. So we're getting there because we're over one year right now.
A final question. People described that after they've had COVID, they've lost their sense of taste and smell. Is that long-term or does that, do people recover?
People typically recover. It is amazing that about, it's as high as 25% of people with COVID-19 report some loss of taste and smell. Generally, they do get it back within a matter of days, but there are people with same thing, permanent. So for some reason, it causes permanent loss and, and, and permanent brain fog and permanent exercise capacity limitations in some people, and others tend to recover. You know, many diseases behave that way. It is so much worse than influenza. If we talk about influenza and other diseases that people like to compare it to and say, it's not so bad, it's just a little bit worse than the flu. You don't hear about people from the flu getting brain fog. You don't hear about people from the flu having, you know, permanent decreased exercise capacity. And so that's another reason. It's not only death toll. And so that's another reason. It's not only death toll, but it's these longer term effects. And again, vaccine is very safe and highly protective of those types of problems. You know, I I hear the funniest things people say to me. They say things like, well, only 1% or 2% of people die with COVID-19. And I just think, would you get on an airplane that got to its destination only 98% of the time? And the rest of the time, it crashed? No, you never would do that. So actually, you know, a death toll of 1 to 2% is really high. It's been as high as 6% in the US. And vaccine causes no problems. Occasionally, somebody gets a rash, you know, and I see him in the emergency department. I watch him for four hours. I give him some Benadryl, and they go home, and they're very happy to be vaccinated. I think people who are really worried will start seeing that, back to Jeannie's question or about her friend. And they'll start seeing that it's okay, and we can't push them too hard. But it's it's been long enough now. They should see that it's time to go ahead and get vaccinated.
Thank you.
Great. These are all great questions and wonderful answers. Anyone else have a question on the board or any of the attendees? No? All right. I think we've exhausted our questions for tonight. As always, Trey and Megan, you are so helpful and it's so wonderful to have you here. We really thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah, thank you. Have a great night.
Bye bye. All right. So next up, we have public comment. Should we put up the numbers again, or do we think it's been reasonably short? Dan, are you grabbing the numbers? Is that? Yeah, okay. All right. So you, if you want to just view, you can be on cat. You can view it on Cat TV, channel 1085. Or you can go to Cat TV Facebook Live. If you want to join by Zoom, you need to use the webinar link, and you can find that on the town's website under Select Board. You'll see the agenda there. You can also dial in at 1-646-558-8656 with the meeting ID number of 894-4878-2346. In order for an attendee to be recognized to speak, you must, if you're on the on the webinar, you can raise your hand. And then and that might be, it may be a raise hand function, it might be under reactions. If you're on the phone, you can push star nine, and that will raise your hand. When you're prompted, if you're on the phone, you will need to unmute yourself by hitting star six. And you will need to clearly state your full name and residence before speaking. So with that, let's move into public comment. I want to say that public comment time is a is a time for residents to share information or questions that will be useful to all. Your comments or questions should be for things that are not on the agenda. This is not a discussion period, but we will try to point you to. If you have questions, we'll try and point you to resources. Your comments should be no longer than three minutes if possible. And as always, to get the most thorough response, please contact our town manager, Stu Hurd, and talk with him before the meeting. So with that, I see we have some individuals who would like to speak. So I will start with telephone number ending in oh two five. You'll need to unmute yourself. Do I need to do something or no?
Hi.
Hi. Please state your name and and town of residence and and let's hear what you have to say.
Hi, this is Nancy White calling. I'm a resident of Bennington. I've got a couple of quick questions. Before your last meeting, did you make public the new membership rates that you were going to be voting on so that citizens had a chance to look at the rates and call in and comment before you voted to approve the rates?
That's a good question.
Yes, they were. They were part of the packet. They were part of the packet, and they went out to the press.
Okay, but were those? I I didn't happen to see the packet. Were they published in the banner as they were back in 2019?
I don't know whether they were or they weren't, Nancy. We don't control that. We provide the information to the to the media. They choose what they put into the paper.
Okay. I want to remind Gene, Jeannie, Bruce, and Jim that in October 2019, Stu gave everybody at the meeting a handout about the Y contract. His memo clearly stated that all revenue from programs, memberships, use of the center, and fees from residents would continue to be controlled by the town. And I told you at the last meeting, I just recently found out that the town hasn't been controlling that money. The Y has been taking it and putting in their account. What is the select board going to do so that the town retakes control of the money as Stu said we would have been controlling all along?
So Nancy, for that question, I'm gonna direct you to Stu, which we have done at every single meeting. So that's a that's a question that that Stuart attempted to answer last time. And I think it's gonna require a little bit more back and forth, and that is not the purpose of public comment. So please connect with Stu tomorrow on that. What what is your third question?
Okay, well, Jeannie, I want to follow up. You got the same information that citizens got. Stu told us that the town was gonna stay in control.
And we are. And I think that Stuart really maybe can talk through what the management agreement allows and how that how that works. Because it it feels like it's it's really a conversation that you need to have rather than a quick answer.
Okay. Why is the select board refusing to reopen the senior center? I called a month ago and Stu said, oh, I'm sorry. I called a month ago and Stu said the senior center would reopen soon. It still hasn't opened. Why hasn't the select board ordered that facility to be reopened for our seniors?
Very quick answer, Jeannie, if I may, is that we are not prepared yet to open the center for to seniors. We are working on a protocol to do so. And we are shooting potentially for a June 1 reopening. I have that in my manager's report regarding to the town offices. But if the town offices are prepared to open, and we've developed a protocol and a process for doing it safely, then we will do so at the senior center as well.
How is it safe to use the rec center and not use the senior center?
It it goes to it goes to the the space allotted, the space availability, and how you would space people within this in the building itself. So our center director has returned from a leave, and and we are in touch with her and moving towards what you desire.
And we're paying Nancy that. I'm sorry. Jeannie, I'm sorry. We are paying for her to sit in an empty room for five weeks. It isn't her fault. She answers for Stu. You made you made arrangements for the YMCA and other groups to use that with spacing. Why can't we do the same thing for our seniors?
Well, we just haven't. We haven't. We haven't got the plan down on on paper, Nancy. That's the answer.
Well, a month ago, Stu, you said it was soon. I think five weeks is plenty of time to have that space ready. Last question. Does the Ben High have a building permit for occupancy?
I believe they do, but I I'm not in charge of that particular thing. That would have been issued by the building inspector.
Okay, please make sure before we have any people or any of our money over there that you can assure everybody that the mold and the asbestos has been addressed there.
We'll do it. All right. And so Nancy, I really do want to encourage you to please contact Stuart tomorrow.
Jeannie, I've contacted Stu, and I've asked these questions at the meeting. You, the select board, won't follow up on your employee.
So Nancy, it's a range of questions that you have, and I appreciate your questions. I think they're good questions, but they're more complicated than than we can handle here. And perhaps we should have, maybe it, we'll see if we can get it on an agenda in the next year, in the next month or so.
All right, I appreciate your time. But again, most of these questions I have asked at select board meetings. I can't get the answer from Stu. It's up to you as his supervisor to provide the answers if he won't.
All right, I'm gonna ask you one more time to call him tomorrow, please. And then we will follow up after you talk with him. All right. So I will follow up with you after you talk with Stuart.
Okay. And I'll remind you, we've got $93,000 left sitting in our senior center budget. Thank you. Goodbye.
Bye. All right, let's see. I see Jenny. I'm going to. I'm trying to unmute you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, this is Jenny Rosicky. I live in North Bennington. I'm also the director at the John G McCullough Free Library. Just checking in with a happy, exciting update and also some service plans over the coming months. I'm really pleased to announce that our restroom renovation project has current. It's currently out to bid. If you need bid documents, you can contact Jack Byer at Goldstone Architecture. So it's a it's a restroom renovation project and electrical re wiring and also work on the Laura Novak meeting room, which is kind of gonna be a Wi-Fi laptop bar and meeting room for up to six people. So if you have some folks you're studying with or a small meeting, that'll be available. So construction, if everything goes to plan, will carry through the summer months and into mid October. That's the best estimate I have right now. Book pickup, the the building won't be open to the public while these renovations are going on because the bathrooms won't be available and the electricity won't be available at certain points. So we need both of those things most of the time to to help folks. So but our book pickup service, which has been really just very popular, and it's it's so pleasing to to see the process, the pickup process, that will still be available three times a week at the library. If there are any service out, you know, temporary service changes, you'll be able to find out about those on our website, which is mcculloughlibrary.org, our Facebook page. And if it looks like it's gonna be like a week or so, probably an e-newsletter just to bring folks up to speed. I'd like to point out that this project has been entirely funded by earmarked donations, generous bequests, and also a $10,000 educational facilities grant from the Vermont Agency of Administration. That was quite a win, I've got to say. So and this project will really bring the the restrooms up to up to code in a lot of ways. Like, they'll be family friendly, accessible to folks with mobility challenges. We will have hot water on the first floor bathroom, which will now be public and available to everybody. So it's very much in line with being able to keep the bathrooms clean and people being able to keep their bodies and hands clean while they're using the facilities at the library. So the the electrical component of this also will support the library's goal to install a heat pump at a later point because currently, we just don't have enough capacity for this sort of stuff. So it lays the groundwork for those later changes and updates. And yeah, I'm I'm pretty excited about this.
That's great, Jenny. It's always so wonderful to hear what's happening at the library. You guys are always on the move and just so responsive to your community. So thank you for the update.
Of course, you're welcome.
All right. Okay, so now let's see. Oh, yeah, yeah. Jenny, are you still there? Yes.
I am.
Okay. Congratulations. This is very exciting news. And I'm curious, the Laura Novak room, if someone were wanting to, and I know it's not ready, but when it is ready, if someone wanted to reserve that, would they just call you, email you, and reserve it? Is that how that works?
At present, it's probably yes, a call or an email, something like that, or stop by to register, you know, to sign the room out. I've looked into kind of room reservation apps, and they might be a little bit too much for what we need. It's probably gonna be a calendar that staff have access to.
Okay.
That sort of. Oh, an exciting component of this is we will have Chromebooks to lend to go along with this. So if you need, and that should, I should have that in order sometime next month. We have the Chromebooks. I have to just catalog them. So. But you'll be able to check out a Chromebook at the lower level and take it up to the the Laura Novak room and use the internet from up there, or bring your own, either way.
Cool. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? I'm really bad at seeing people's hands. Any other hands?
Sarah, so. I just wanted to say that's awesome on the grant. Great, Jenny. Thank you so much. And you put in such an enormous amount of time on the hours that you have. So thank you. Sounds great. And I look forward to using the room.
Thank you, Sarah. All right. All right. Let's see. I see we have some additional attendees. So anything else for public comment? Anyone else wishing to speak tonight? Yes, there goes a hand. Ending in 196, telephone ending in 196. Go ahead. You'll hit, need to hit star six.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sounds like a commercial.
Where are you from?
Excuse me?
Please introduce yourself and where you're from.
Mike Bethel, and I'm still in Bennington.
Okay, hi, Mike.
Although some some people may want me out of Bennington, but that's a different story. Stu's gonna, I believe, Stu, you're gonna get me the information that I asked for last time around, right?
Yeah, I'm I'm waiting for that information to come to my way.
Okay, I appreciate it. And the other thing is, last week, when I made a comment, and I believe when Nancy made the comment, when we couldn't call back in, Gene Connor made kind of a snide remark. And I just want to clarify that. I don't have to use a facility to wonder what it costs to use the facility. As most people know, I'm in a wheelchair, and right now I can't use the rec center. But I wish those comments would stop. I get a lot of calls from people that are concerned about the taxes in Bennington, and so does Nancy White. And they, for some reason, don't want to call in, or it's difficult too. So I'm not calling just to be a pastor, neither is Nancy, I don't believe. But these questions need to be answered to the fullest because you people are the people in control, and Stu is the manager and all of that. So I just want to make that remark that I didn't appreciate the comment last week.
Well, thanks, Mike. I'm sure there was no, there was, you know, no bad intent there. And we do appreciate your comments. So, you know, thank you for calling in.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? All right. All right. So I think we're closing public comment. I don't see any other hands. All right. So then we're gonna move on to, there's been a very able committee of Tom Haley, Sarah Perrin, and Gene Connor looking at public comment period. And I'm gonna turn it over to you guys to talk about what you have, what you have to share with us tonight. Sure. So so the public knows. Jeannie asked me to convene a little subcommittee to just look at public, the comment, public comment period part of our agenda, which we did. So that included myself, Tom Haley, and Sarah Perrin. And we met twice on Zoom. And I'm just gonna give a little bit of an introduction as to what sort of like the guiding principles were of of how.
um, of, of how we kind of framed the discussion, and it was three questions. How to make public comment a better experience for the person making the comment? How to make that period um, on our agenda better, a better experience for the public watching? And how to make it more productive, a more productive use of time for the select board during meetings and this, and the staff. Um, so those are sort of what we were thinking about when we were coming up with the ideas, and we came up with one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Um, ideas, um, some of which we might want, not want to adopt, some of which I think we already do, but it was sort of a clarification and a reminder of, of um, what our intentions are in handling public comments. And the last one on the list um, is something that I thought of um, kind of after we met, and then Sarah and Tom agreed that yes, we should include it. Um, and they're, they're, they're gonna talk about um, all of them unless they want me to, Tom, you wanted to jump in here. So that's kind of the background, um. Everyone in the board has the, has all of our comments, so I guess we can discuss them one at a time, or we can, I don't know how you wanna, how to, how you wanna tackle this, Jeannie, but.
I think whatever you guys wanna do.
Okay. Tom, you wanna go?
All right, yeah, well, I can go ahead. Um, just so y'all know, my internet has been a little spotty tonight, so if I go away, one of you guys just pick it up. Cause I think we're all on the same page. Um, we discussed a lot of different ideas, uh, one thing we all agreed on immediately is to keep public comment um, at the beginning of the meetings, uh, we think that works out for, best for people. Um, and moving it to the end, I think would only, uh, we all thought would only discourage uh, people from participating. Um. We recommend, we're gonna recommend reading the rules um regarding public comments uh, before we have public comment. Um, included on the agenda and uh, on the website as well, um, and we'll get more into that a little bit. Um, it's also important for the folks that, that do wanna comment, is to get a copy of the agenda for each meeting, because if you have comments or questions related to something on the agenda, it's most appropriate to make them when we're discussing that agenda item. Um, if it's something that is not on the agenda, then certainly call in uh, for public comment. Um, public comments should be kept at a maximum of three minutes, I think that's self-explanatory. Um, this one is where we run into problems a little bit. Um, the public comment period is for discussing items, or for the public to comment on items that are not on the agenda. Um, often we are asked questions or, or, or to make comments or what have you. The trouble is, because of open meeting law, the select board cannot engage in a conversation if it has not been warned. Um, and the reason for the warnings is so that anyone that has an opinion on a subject can know to go to the meeting. So that leads into what is a conversation? In my view, a conversation is when two parties have an exchange. Someone asks a question, if I provide an answer, we're in a conversation at that point, in my view. Um, so please keep your, your, your statements to the form, your comments as comments, as statements, if possible. Um, if you have a question that could be answered very quickly, we will direct you to go to the town manager. Um. Stu is, Stu is the manager, he is the best resource for you, for getting the answers you need. Um. We invite agencies who receive funding from the town, or any agencies in the town, to use the public comment period to tell us what's going on with the agencies and the events they may have happening, et cetera. Um, if we do have questions, um, that would take too much time to answer, we will, we will ask Stu to make a note of them and perhaps include those answers in his manager's report the following week. Um, and hopefully close the loop on it that way. Um. If we see a lot of people with the same question or comment, that is, that should serve as an indication to the board that perhaps that should be an, an agenda item uh, for a later meeting, so we can have a proper discussion on that. And yeah, as far as uh, the last note here, um, basically i- it comes down to asking the same question repeatedly. Um, if perhaps you didn't like, it's okay to ask follow-up, I guess, is, is what I'm saying, but to ask the same question again and again, because you don't necessarily maybe like the answer. What is, it, it it slows things down, it bogs things down. Um, again, talking, having a conversation with Stuart would be the best way to go on those things, and uh, so we'll ask you at that point in time, if the question's been asked repeatedly, um, to please have a conversation with the town manager and move on to the next person. So that's the nutshell versions of, of everything we talked about, uh, Sarah, Jean, do you have any more to add to that?
Sarah, do you have anything?
I think that was a kind of the consensus we came to.
Okay, I just, um, there was one thing on um, one of the items about Stu possibly including answers to questions that he's been asked in his manager's report. Um, we also talked about, and this is gonna be, this is gonna be um a personnel issue to manage as well, but we were wondering if it would be a good idea to post the questions that people ask on the website and Stu can answer them, and that, they wouldn't live there forever, but you know, maybe a month, and then, you know, the questions would go away, but it's gonna require someone to manage that, and we're not sure that there's a staff person available who would be able to do that. Um, but we thought it was a good idea, but answering them within the manager's report i- is also a good idea, and maybe that's enough.
Yeah, I think these are all great clarifications and suggestions, um, and Sarah, I, you didn't, um, you didn't um, give yourself credit for this, but I understand that you also did a lot of research on what other towns had done, and you know, you thoroughly looked at what, what the process could be, so I, I really truly appreciate that. Um, do any select board members have comments on, on this research and these suggestions? Yes, Jim?
Thank you, um, Tom, Sarah, and Gene. I wonder if uh, you guys were thinking about all this within the framework of uh, Zoom meetings? Or in a broader context where, you know, eventually we'll, we'll have to be in each other's presence, reluctantly or otherwise.
Well, I can't speak for Sarah or Tom, but I didn't think that one either way, I, I just thought a bit, thought about public comment, I didn't have an opinion either way, that we would choose to do things differently if it was Zoom versus in-person, but maybe Sarah or Tom did.
Now, for my, for myself, I think uh, we ha, I think, you know, we had some different things that we might have done in writing, but nothing significant and nothing that we noted for myself personally, and nothing that we really noted in, in this, speaking for myself.
Yeah, I agree, uh, process is process in this case, I think. And uh, I, I don't think anything here is, is specific to Zoom or specific to in-person.
Okay, thank you.
Great, great question, Bruce, you're up.
Thank you, um, thanks for your work, everybody, I, I really appreciate it, I'm, I'm looking for a little bit of clarity around um. I know there were twelve items, I noted that there were twelve items, as Jean had said. Um, when you talk about uh, printing or the rules for public comment, I, I'm assuming you don't mean to print everything that's in those twelve bullets, so. Um, yeah, so I, I'm just trying to figure out um. What do we mean by the rules? I mean, yes, three minutes. Um, comments about things not on the agenda. I mean, is it about expectations? I think there ought to be, I think, I, I like the idea of posting it uh, both on our agenda as well as um, on the town's website. Though I think, as we put things on the town's website, it's gonna get harder and harder to find things on the town's website, so. Um, but be that as it may, um. I ju, I just, I don't know exactly what we mean by the rule, so um, if at some point somebody wants to condense all this to something that can be put on the, on the agenda and put up there under public comments, I think that's helpful. Uh. And I do think it's helpful to talk about comments more than questions. And I know some people, some of us find it difficult to ask or to make comments that don't sound like questions, but, um, but I do think what I perceive anyway, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, uh, what I perceive is that that's uh, that's one of the things that you hope will evolve um, to the good if we adapt something here. Am I correct?
I, I would agree, I would agree, and, and sometimes the questions were asked, we, Stu, we we literally don't have the information in front of us, and you know, sometimes, you know, we all sit here like I would be able to answer that question if I could go upstairs and start digging through my packets, or you know, but we don't have access to that information at a meeting, so, you know, sometimes it's just, it's difficult, we just can't answer the question off the tops of our heads, or and if you try to, then you risk giving bad information, and that's a bad idea. So I think that's another issue with make, with asking questions, unless it's something, you know, really simple. And what people perceive as something simple and what is actually simple could be two different things too. Things are usually more complicated than they seem to be at first blush. Um, but I think what we meant was, we wouldn't put all of this, obviously, under public comment, it would be you know, three minutes, state your name, you know, the real nuts and bolts, but I'm wondering, as you were saying that, I was thinking, huh, would it, once we're back in person, would it be a good idea to have several copies of the full set of procedures or, or principles, or whatever we're gonna call this, available for people, cause you know, they have to sign in. If they're gonna make a comment, they could pick up the sheet, just to refresh their memory, make sure what they're gonna say is appropriate. So that may be, that's something super easy we could do, just put a couple, put a couple copies of it next to the, the clipboard where they have to sign in.
I think that's a great suggestion, and I'm thinking there are um, I guess, six things that we usually say at the beginning of public comment period, including, you know, try and keep your comments to three minutes. Um, but there are six things that we usually say, and I'm wondering if it makes sense if you guys would be willing to meet again and sort of, like, I send you those six things and you also look at what you have and sort of meld them into something that once we start meeting in person again, we, we could have as a handout at every meeting, that people could refresh their memory.
Yeah. We also need to remember, you know, this big chunk right here at the top of our agenda is gonna go away. So we will have more room on that page someday.
Okay, so do we, um, uh, what's the sense of the board? Do we feel like these uh, these principles make sense to us and we can just move forward with them, or do we want to formally adopt them with emotion? Can we just move forward, or, yeah, okay?
I, I would suggest we just move forward.
Okay.
And, and let them, and if we wanna adapt those, that second piece, that's, that would be fine.
Okay, all right, all right, any other thoughts on that?
No one had any problems with any of them, we really are open to criticism.
No, I think they're great.
No, okay.
All right, so great, so we're gonna move on to our Energizer update. And uh, Gary Corey is up, he was, he had agreed to be the select board's representative to the reimagining the Energizer plant group, and um, and so he's gonna let us know what he's been learning. So Gary, you're on.
Thank you. Um, so, as I think all of us know, and most of our community knows, that Energizer has wound down is largely wa, winding down its operations here in Bennington, and is in the process of uh, selling the real estate. Here's a quick overview of what's happening at the town level. The uh, town of Bennington has been awarded uh, funding from three sources. Uh, municipal um, planning grant from the Vermont Agency of Commerce and Community Development, the Vermont DEC, and Shire's Housing, uh, that's to study the potential reuse of the facility. The Bennington County Regional Commission, BCRC, will serve as the project manager and uh, produce certain elements of the reuse study, and they'll do that in collaboration with a project consultant. Uh, about a couple of weeks ago, we selected Commune Associates and was uh, to be that consultant for the study. Uh, that study will identify potential uses and opportunities for economic development associated with redevelopment of that property. It will also include a town-wide housing uh, needs assessment. The study will be completed in September of this year, uh, planning has already started, and um a public meeting uh, later in the spring, uh, exact dates to be determined, uh, as they move forward with the uh, beginning parts of the study. Uh, and that uh, that meeting, the public meeting will be for uh, to present what uh, what has started uh, being part of that study, and then solicit input from the community.
Super. Great, thank you, um, any questions from, from the board on what's happening in Energizer? Jim, your hand is up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Gary, are, are there, with your interactions with the BCRC, have there been any limitations put on um, you know, what might or might not be considered with respect to the, the plant?
Um, I would say um, none at all, I mean, I think that what we're looking at is for the consultant to start making suggestions for BCRC to uh, to work with them, and really to uh, the, the new zoning bylaws that we approved last week, uh, actually uh, the possibility for other things to happen there, uh, and, and it's actually helping to direct what, what can happen.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Super, thank you, any other questions from board members? I'm looking for hands here. All right, I don't see any, all right, and I don't think we have any questions from attendees. All right, so that's great, Gary, so um, you'll let us know when the public hearing or the public meeting's gonna happen, and um.
I'll update you. Make sure that everybody knows.
That's super, all right, thank you very much. Lovely, all right, so now we're gonna move on to community policing update. So we have two policies for a second reading, one policy for first reading, an update on the procedures, and then a little bit on next steps, so Bruce, you're up.
Okay. The um, policy that we have been calling use of social media, which really turns out to have a name called Officer and Employee Internet Postings slash Social Networking. Uh, I know social media seems quicker, but uh, can't do all that, I think we made, uh, the draft that you have uh, has made any of the changes that you suggested. Um. Which included lines, uh, around line eight, line eighteen on page one, and lines four through eight on page two. Um, I didn't get any additional comments on that, so um, that's where we are.
Okay, do I have any? Yeah, any questions from, from the board? On the very long name social media policy?
Right.
Um, Jim, you're on a roll tonight, okay, you're up.
I'm ready, Jim.
I've had too many coffees. Bruce, and this may go to Stu as well and for the rest of you that have formulated this. Is there? Is there any danger in? I mean, that's not the right word. What if we were to expand this to all employees of the town, including select board members?
I, I, no, Jim, I'll take a stab at, I, you know. Personally, I have no problem. With. With doing something similar, but not without some discussion. And I think with regard to, I know that the committee had some conversation. And we talked, and I think Dan Monks being on that committee. Probably brought that back, that there was probably a need for something similar within the employees of the town. It wouldn't be exactly the same, and. I'd want to think about the implications for elected officials. That's the, Jim, that's the only place where I, and I certainly don't think any of us would be. Creating. Personas on other websites that, that would mask our true identity. I don't think there's a problem with holding us to that kind of a standard. But there's a speech issue that we probably would have to be thinking about if it applies to elected officials. And that I would not be prepared to think about without some further consideration, although I think it's an interesting proposal.
Well, yeah, I, I think, I thank you, Bruce, I think you hit it right on the head. You know, this is a matter of free speech fundamentally. But, you know, the, the Bennington PD cannot, as, as, as it's defined around this framework. Cannot speak on behalf of the Bennington PD in a larger sense, you know, as individuals. Is that a pretty good encapsulation?
Well, Jim, I would put it this way. When you're an employee. Let me use an example from my own past as a teacher. When I was, when I was working for the Southwest Vermont Career Development Center or the Regional Technical School District. I, my, I did have free speech rights, but only on issues of public concern. That's, that's, I didn't have a right to just take potshots at teachers or students or administration just because I felt like I could. My, as an employee, my speech rights are, are somewhat limited. And that's been recognized by the Supreme Court, so while I do have free speech on. Issues of general interest and interests of public interest. That doesn't just give me carte blanche, and that's really what we're saying here. And for police officers, that's a bigger issue, and the issue is really one of. Having credibility, because remember, police officers testify under oath. In courts, and we want police officers to be able to do that and not jeopardize their credibility. To the degree, to the point where they would no longer be able to do that kind of testimony if they were, in fact, fabricating something. In some way on an internet networking site, and it was discovered by a defense attorney, which quite frankly, it will be. That makes them essentially useless in front of a jury. So that, and that compromises their capacity to act as police officers. So that's, that's one of the complicated issues around free speech and networking. Probably said too much.
No, thank you, Bruce, but I, I am curious what Dan and Stu might have to, to say about this.
Sure.
Well, luckily, I see Gary is up next and then Stu has his hand up, so you will be able to hear that, so Gary, you're next.
So Bruce, the one question I had is, has the town attorney looked at this just to make sure that there's nothing that, okay?
Absolutely. By the time these come to you, Gary, the town attorney has looked at all of them and he has made a couple of suggestions. Including the change from social media to social networking. That language comes right out of our town attorney.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Stu, you are up.
Thank you. As to Jim's question, I don't think that as, as the manager, I have any issue with a policy regarding use of. The internet postings and social networking. I, I do think that this is more onerous because of the people we're dealing with than it needs to be for an employee of the town, but. Certainly, there is, I think there is a need for all of us to be a little bit more cautious about what we do and what we say. In the social media arena. One question though, Bruce, in, under section two policy, B1. Why do you use the term candidate? Shall provide the agency with access? That kind of comes out of the blue when I read it.
So. It, this actually comes right out of, as, as I recall, it comes out of the IACP. Language, and, and you're right, it does sort of, now that I think about it, comes sort of out of the blue. But what it means is, if you're a candidate for employment, and we may want to clarify that.
I think we should.
Candidate for employment in the Bennington Police Department. You have to do the same thing that you would if you were an officer. So.
We should clarify that, Bruce, that makes sense in that.
Okay, so can we? I'm happy to make that change, and, and we can decide whether we need to vote on that change or just agree to it. The candidate for employment by the BPD shall, is what I would just put down. Is that, does that work for everybody? That's a good catch, I think that's clearer.
Yeah, I think, I think that's good, and so we can, we can vote on this as amended unless someone has a. A question about.
Yes, and by the way, that's not unusual in any stretch, in any police department, not unusual.
Um, did you, did you want to share, Bruce, who worked on this policy?
I, thank you, I did, and I had that list in front of me. Right here. I wanted to thank Pete Niles, Jackie Kelly, Robert Ebert and Sean Pratt. As well as the three permanent members, myself, Dan Monks and Dan Ferrara.
Thank you. All right.
Remind me on each of these.
That's lovely, um, do you want to, do you want to, should we vote on this one now?
Yeah, yeah, let's, I'm, I'm ready to do that as amended, oh, we got a.
Jim has his hand up. Oh, Jim, hi, go ahead.
Yeah, I still like, would like to hear from Dan.
What do you want to hear about, Jim?
Your opinion.
I, I believe strongly that we should have a social media policy that, that applies to all staff members, and we, we all agree that that's a, a goal we want to work toward. I also think that by consensus, it'd be great for the select board to adopt a social media policy with understanding that. Your free speech rights are significantly more broad than, than an employee who has, has conditions of employment, so, but they're all good ideas.
Okay, so you, what you were saying is that it would not be strictly confined to the Bennington PD. But in a larger sense, to any employee of the town, am I mistaken on that?
Well, this particular policy couldn't apply to all employees because there's certainly, there's different dynamics with the BPD. With police departments than employees in general, but a social media policy addressing many of the same issues. Is certainly something that we should do for, for the rest of the town staff. That's my opinion.
Thank you. And, and Jim, that's my opinion too, and if you, you want, want to work on any of that with me, at least as far as the, the seven of us who are board members. You and I could sit down and write something up and propose it to the rest of the board and see, see how it flies.
Well, thank you, Bruce, that's a wonderful invitation to participate. I, I just, I'm just worried about the broader implications of. The right to free speech. And the constitutional guarantees of it that I think are. Just the areas that we really have to very carefully tread on, and that, those are my thoughts.
So Jim, we would, we would certainly have our town council review anything that we passed as a town policy. And anything that we wanted to recommend as a select board. Policy or, or practice as well, so I, I, I think those are very good points. And so we will put that on the list of, on our long list of things that should be done, maybe, maybe that one sooner rather than later. So do I have a motion to adopt this policy?
As amended?
As amended.
I will move.
Excellent, Bruce, do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tom, all right, so please unmute yourself, everyone in favor of this policy. Please raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Any abstaining? All right, so it passes, yay, all right, let's move on to the next policy.
Okay, this is special events and demonstrations. Couple of things have changed and I'm still. Open for discussion about what the number should be, if you think 50 is too many. I've gone around the state to look around and. They're sort of all over the place. But it's generally in this area between 25 to 50. The, by the way, before I forget, the folks who worked on this one. In addition to the three already mentioned permanent members, Lorna Chariton, Hamilton Topping and Chris Bates. So we want to thank them for their participation. I will say, I did. Make a couple of changes after the last discussion regarding crowd control. Which I actually think. Works a little better. Certainly, naming de-escalation as the first option, I think is always the best option. And that's in keeping with our. Response to active resistance, use of force policy where de-escalation is, is named as the first. A couple of questions have arisen and just I want to let everybody know. Around the area of the utilizing forms attached, those forms would be. Created by the Bennington PD, a number of PDs have forms, actually, there's a current form at the Bennington PD on. Use of staff for. What is it called, not, non? Not on duty time, I think it's, or some version of that, so for instance. What's, what's the charge per hour for officers if they're at a school dance? And there isn't, by the way, I, I don't believe, and Sarah, maybe you can help me out on this. I don't think there's a minimum number of hours, a number of departments in the state and out of the state require. At least a four-hour commitment before they do that, I don't think that's, I think that's too. Personally, I think that's, that's not flexible enough, and it doesn't give the department and. Community organizers around social, special events enough flexibility. But currently, I believe that the charge per officer is $45 or thereabouts. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. In order, in, and, and in order to clarify this, it was never the intent of the committee that, that. Organizers of free speech events, and that's what I would call them. Free speech, it was never the intent that I know of, that free speech events would have to be. Would be charged any kind of fee for the use of police, because that's just normal policing. And, and so if you feel like you need to have something in there specifically at the end of policy. Under A at line 18, I have some, some suggested language which would make it explicit. That if you are, that free speech events and demonstrations held on public property. Will not be subject to the collection of any fees. I personally don't, I think it's implied in the other, but if you need, if you would like it to be explicit, that's how you can do it. And after this, I'll just take any questions. Or comments.
Yes, Sarah.
Yeah, I think adding that in, I think that's ideal, and it's, yeah, you mentioned, yeah, I, I just looked in the email, right, it's $46, $46 an hour, minimum of three hours. I think that's, and I just think having, not, having that knowledge and passing that, no matter what the fee. I'm more comfortable just with that knowledge.
Sure.
And, yeah.
So you would like that extra language in there?
I would, yes, yes.
I'm happy to add it if, as a, now I can read it again if somebody would like me to.
Yes, please read it again, I think.
So this would come at line 18. After the, after the words. Private property. Free speech events and demonstrations held on public property are not subject to fee collection by the Bennington Police Department. I think that's just, it makes explicit was, what was implicit. And I think it could become, you know, when the police do the procedures, which would include the form. It could become even more explicit in that, but that certainly will help.
Great. Sarah, did you have another question?
Nope, I, I did not, but I think, you know, just adding that in really just captions our mission statement, so I think that's great to add.
I agree.
Mission too, yeah. Any other questions on this policy? All right, then do I have a motion to accept this policy as amended?
I will move again.
All right, thank you, Bruce, do you have a second?
Second that, Sarah, seconding, thank you, all right, unmute yourself, please, and all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, please say no. All right, any abstentions? All right, excellent, all right, so we move on to the first reading of the body worn cameras, yeah?
Yes, body worn cameras, otherwise known as BWC. And the committee involved in this, in, in addition to Dan, Dan and myself, were. Jeff Reed, Mark Blank, Reed Goose and April Dunham. And we thank them for their service.
Do you have any comments you want to make on this before we get into it, Bruce?
Actually, no, not really, the. The red was the result of our discussions, but we ran out of time in terms of actually crafting language, so I. Tried to summarize ours, that's, that's why that is in red, just so you know. That the issue of releasing. Recordings. Is an active issue, I would say, still in Vermont, it is a public document. And as such. The, the assumption is it will be released unless some, for, unless there's some other limiting exception in the law. And so we are governed, we don't get to make this law here, we are governed by the way in which Vermont. law here. We are governed by the way in which Vermont statutes and the Supreme Court of Vermont function and work. So I just want everybody to be clear about that.
All right. So any comments on this? On this policy? Jean?
Bruce, to that point, is there a timeframe? They need to be released within 30 days, 60 days? Is there any, any time constraints to when they should be released?
That you're, you're already getting into the difficulty of this.
Okay.
And, and I'm not trying to be evasive. I'm just trying to say that as public documents, they are to be released as soon as possible unless, and then it goes into a series of exceptions. And so there may be an exception that applies. So for example, if it's evident, it's going to be used as evidence in a case, it may not be
Not be released.
Immediately. And it, and then it's up to the court.
Okay.
It'll be up to the trial court then to decide when. I mean, that's beyond, that's beyond our control. We can't control that and we can't make a policy that would hamstring a court or the state's attorney.
Yeah. And I guess, I guess if there were time constraints or requirements, it's, it's included in, shall be in compliance with other, yeah.
That's precisely the reason for that language.
Yep.
And by the way, the town attorney did look at that language. That's, and found it to be appropriate.
Jim, you're up.
Hey Bruce, I think you made it clear, but I want to be even clearer about this. Who will be the determining body with respect to the release of any video?
If I made that clear, you heard something that I didn't say. It depends. It depends on if, if it is evidence, it will be the state's attorney and the court and defense attorneys for that matter. They have a say. If it's used as evidence. If it's not, then it will be the PD and it will be released. Because body worn camera data is public, it's a public document.
Okay, well, from what I've read, it, that is not clear that, you know, who would be able to release those videos. It's not in here unless I missed something or.
You didn't miss it, but the, but the videos belong, the, the document is a Bennington Police Department document. Therefore, they would release it. We, we don't control those, although we can order that we as the select board could, I suppose, order the, the town manager to order the chief of police to release documents that the chief may not want to release. I think that's within our purview, but the owner of these documents is the Bennington Police Department. Therefore, the town. I'm, I'm sorry if that sounds too convoluted. And there may be a simpler way to say that, which is.
I could jump in.
Sure.
Jump in and make it a little simpler, just in practice and how these things go. So we all understand as admissible officials that public documents are generally viewed as as something that needs to be released unless we have a very clear and articulated reason for not releasing them. And then we always, almost always, unless it's just so clear, it's, it's beyond argument, check with our attorney because we just, you have to make the assumption based on Supreme Court cases and statute that the document gets released. And if you're not releasing it, you better have a rock solid reason for not doing it. And that's why we talk to our attorney.
Right.
And I, I think it also would be helpful for people out there who are listening. These aren't simply going to be released after they're made. They're released if they are requested by the public or by citizen oversight committee or whatever reason for the request for the release. It's not, they're just not going to be putting them up there out for people to want. It's, it's a requested release.
And, and Jim, that's all in state statute.
Correct.
Okay.
So we chose not to, I mean, I think, yes, it's 317C of 1VS A. So we chose not to just reprint the state statute. We'll follow the state statute, which means if it's a public document, it gets released upon request.
So it's like at this point, so we, so this is a first reading and I think you've given us all like things to think about. This has been a really good discussion. And there may be individuals in the public that also want to either ask questions or, or, you know, make suggested language or whatever. So I think, yeah, I think this is, I think this is actually really useful for all of us to think about. Any other questions about this, about the body worn cameras or are we ready to move on that one and let it go? Okay.
Jeanie, I just, you just have, I have one comment or worry, I should say. And that is the, the development of language that is clearer about who will decide whether or not video will be released, even though it's, you know, it's clear that it, it's a public record insofar as it pertains to the Bennington PD. But who's going to decide whether or not that can be released to the public?
I hear you, Jim.
You'll work on that for the next iteration of this draft? Okay. All right. Perfect. All right. So let's move on then. Jean, you were going to give us an update on the procedures review?
Yeah, just really briefly. So the, the comment period for the first batch ended on April 28th at 5:00 PM. And there were a total of 17 comments that came in on the sets of procedures for that batch. It was not 17 different people, but I don't know how many people it actually was. I didn't tally that, but there were 17 separate comments and no one seems to be able to pin down a date when the next batch of procedures will be available for public comment, but it's going to be several months. So I, we were thinking maybe the end of the summer, early fall. So everybody can take.
Yeah, we have to adopt all the policies for, so it.
Right. Yeah. So anyone, anyone who's interested in commenting on the next set of procedures, you have some reading time.
Great. All right. Is that, are you, are you finished?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. All right. And then I just wanted to let us know, share that. So where we are in our community policing process is we have done community research on community policing and on oversight. We've established a town vision and also a police depart, department mission. We've worked on the 14 most critical police policies, as Jean just said, and we're not quite through with them. And then we are working on procedures for each of those. And we've, I think, been really fortunate in Bennington to really engage a large number of residents around all of, all of the activities that have been going on. So it's, it feels like our next step in this is to formalize a role for the community in making recommendations on policies and procedures, making recommendations on training and collaboration within the department. And also looking at review of police department complaints and hopefully some data analysis. So we will be releasing a proposal probably mid this week. We're still doing a little bit of internal review. But we'll be releasing a proposal to the select board and also to the community. And we will take that up at our May 24th meeting. And that will probably still be a two-meeting process. But we'll take it up on, as a first time on May 24th. And we are still working with our town attorney to see what updates we can make on the interim protocol on review of complaints to make sure that we are protecting the privacy of the complainant as well as we can while still providing as much transparency as we can. So that's, that's all we have on community policing tonight. All right. Ready for agenda item, I don't know, seven, eight, something? Certification and attestation, which has to do with CLR and restrictions on the deed, right? And I'm going to turn this over to Stuart.
Thank you.
Yes.
Just historically, Henry W. Putnam built the hospital in the town of Bennington years and years ago, obviously, more than a hundred years ago. And provided that to the village of Bennington at the time, which when the village merged with the town, the town became the trustee of the sites. Basically, via a deed of gift, which is a, obviously a legal document that, that requires that the town provide certain oversight for uses at the hospital on the lands that the town controls. And not all of the land at the hospital is under the town's control. It's kind of a patchwork of various parcels. So in order for the hospital to be able to sell property, we needed to go to court to essentially amend the deed of gift. And that is a legal process that requires the assistance of the Attorney General's Office and the mutual legal consultation of the hospital and the town. And the reason we, we come to this very formal process is the judgment that was issued required that the board must sign a written certification that will be recorded in the land records, that the town has determined that the healthcare services to be delivered as a result of this conveyance will comply with the judgment. So this, this board some time ago, back in April of last year, I believe. Time flies. Determined that yes, changing the ownership of CLR will not change the use of the structure in the buildings and the facilities. So therefore it does remain as a healthcare facility. And we have found that. We have, of course, two new board members. So we are trusting that those board members also agree with that finding. And that's part of the reason we are here tonight. The second finding was that the select board must file not only its meeting minutes with this certification, but there is also a requirement that the board members attest to the fact that they have made that finding. And if you'll notice that the, on the final page of the document, there is a place for board members to attest by their signatures that they recuse themselves from the discussion because they have some sort of conflict of interest with regard to the sale of the property. So that's why we're here tonight with this document. It does require a motion by the board. And because it is a document that must be filed and the land records, we will need to have every board member come into the town offices, should this pass, and place their signature on the document before it is filed. And we would hope that we would do that relatively quickly because the, after a long and tenuous process, more than a year, the property is ready to be transferred. So this is our last act to allow the CLR to, to change hands. And I'm looking for you to one, make a motion to accept the certification and to, at, at some point attest by your signature to the fact that you approve this sale and that if any of you do have any kind of a conflict of interest, that you would also sign recusing yourselves from this vote. So there you have it. I hope that's clear.
Yes, I think so. Any, any questions for Stuart? On this? Sarah, yes?
So I guess this is more of a comment. I guess when I was newer to the board and this would have come up for me, it would have been great for just a 90-second overcap of what this was. Would you mind just doing a quick overcap of what this is for the newer, maybe Tom and Gary know what this is? But would you mind just doing a brief, like, hey, you know, just a brief thing?
Well, I thought I was close to doing that, but as you know, the hospital has operated the CLR facility for many years. They have determined that it is not necessarily cost effective for them to do it. That it may be more efficient for a private entity who is well versed in the operation of centers for rehabilitation to operate this facility. And they went out and sought via process, interested parties. And this was probably more than a year ago. In April of 2020, they came to the board and presented us with their findings and sought the select board's approval because we are the trustees of the property. We don't necessarily own the buildings, but we own the land on which they sit according to the deed of gift. And they must be used, those lands must be used for medical purposes under the deed of gift. So at this point, Tom D and counsel for the hospital approached the select board, asked if the board would consider allowing the hospital to transfer the land under CLR to the new organization whose name unfortunately is out of my head at the present time, but they are an organization that is a private, I think it's a family run organization. They operate these facilities throughout this region and I think the southeast. And they are very interested in operating this facility here. So this is the final step in, in providing the hospital the opportunity to sell that property. We don't benefit by the sale other than the property now comes on to the tax rolls. Up until now, it has been tax exempt because it's operated by the hospital. Because it's moving into private hands, it will actually come on to the grand list of the town of Bennington. So there is a monetary benefit to allowing this to happen to the town and to the hospital, which why it's been mutually agreed to as a good thing for the community. How was that, Sarah? Did that help?
Yeah, thank you. I think that would have been helpful. Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Jean, do you have a question?
Yeah, before I ask it though, I, I remember a pretty important piece of information that Tom shared with us, but he shared it with us in executive session. So I'm not sure if I should ask the question.
When you ask the question.
I, should I ask it?
We can't, we can't tell you, Jean, without knowing what it is, whether you'd be giving up.
It was about, and it was about the agreement with the new owner.
I'm not sure that should, that's between the hospital and the new owner.
Okay, I better not ask it.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Yeah.
Let's see. Dan, you have your hand up.
Sure. I just want to make sure that everyone understands this, this situation, this agreement, this proposal was thoroughly reviewed by two of our councils and was, was recommended to us by them. And it is also very important to remember that even though this transfers to another entity, we retain all, all of our rights to control this property in its use in the future under the deed of gift. So if for some reason this entity doesn't live up to its bargain to, to provide healthcare to the community, it comes back to us and we get to determine what happens to it. So this isn't, this doesn't give this new entity the right to do anything other than public and healthcare that is beneficial to this community. So.
Thank you, Dan. That was helpful.
Thank you. Jim, your hand's been going up and down. Are you, are you good?
No, I'm just, I'm glad that Dan clarified that.
No, I'm, I just, I'm glad that Dan clarified that, you know, should the soon-to-be new owners cannot change the use of this and put up a twelve-story hotel or motel. It's always got to be related to healthcare and under the auspices of the city of Bennington. So not just anything can go there. Just want to make that clear to the public. That's it.
That's a very useful clarification. Thank you. Alright, so do we, any more questions? Are we ready to vote? Alright, would someone like to make a motion that we accept the certification and?
So move. I will move that we accept the certification and that we work our way down to signing.
Great.
I'll sign that motion.
Thank you, Sarah. Alright, so everyone unmute themselves, and if you would please, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Alright, so thank you. This passes and we'll all, should we come in sometime this week, Stuart?
It'd be great if you could do that. We'll, we'll make it available so that we can get you right into the conference room. We're, we're no longer taking temperatures, so we'll get you into the conference room, get you to sign it and get you on your way.
Okay, perfect. Alright, so Stuart, you're still up. So managers' report?
Alright, I just have two quick points that, that came to me today. One, citizen asked a question about where, where's that new ladder truck? And it was scheduled to be here in February. Unfortunately, there is a part that they're waiting for. So now the delivery date has been pushed back to late May, possibly early June. I'm not entirely certain what the part is, but it's, it's necessary for the truck to be transferred to us. So we're, we're still hopeful. We have obviously secured the funds and are prepared to pay for the truck when it arrives. But at this point, it has not arrived. The second thing is I learned today that the Vermont K-9 Association has awarded Rob Marowski, Officer Rob Marowski in K-9 Gracie, the K-9 Patrol Team of the Year. So kudos to both Rob and Gracie. It's a, it's a award, an award obviously that is recognized by their peers in law enforcement. And we're very pleased to hear that today. There will be an award ceremony and a photograph coming up at some point in the near future, I understand. The action item I have for you tonight is the, relates to the Bennington County Solid Waste Alliance inter-local agreement. I gave you a little bit more history here than I, and I probably should have done the same. Sarah's probably correct when I read that memorandum on the sale of C L R. There's not a lot of history there. In April of twenty-fifteen, the select board voted to enter into an inter-local agreement with twelve other towns in the county to operate a solid waste alliance. It's a, an agreement whereby all towns participate with measured voting rights and participation via financial assistance. We currently contract with the Bennington County Regional Commission to operate as the contractor for us in setting up all kinds of activities for the operation of solid waste management. For instance, on Saturday, we held a Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day at the Mount Anthony Middle School. We set a new record for participation with over three hundred and seventeen vehicles. I think close to three hundred and fifty households came through between nine o'clock and one, disposing of hazardous materials and the, the, the alliance also collected batteries there to ensure that they are then recycled. So that's one of those events that we all pay into. And we have a, a board that operates, I am your representative to the, to the alliance committee. And I serve currently as its treasurer also. Believe me, I don't have any money in, that I have to handle. So what I'm asking for tonight is when we adopted the new Bennington County Solid Waste Alliance implementation plan, which is a requirement every five years. God bless the state of Vermont that we have to do this. There were three changes that were made that require us to change the alliance agreement. We added one meeting, minimum meeting per year. We are now providing a list of the media that we use for notices. And there's a, a new paragraph which allows for new programs and facilities. And for instance, we are participating in the potential creation of an asphalt recycling program, asphalt shingle recycling program. Although the state has not yet created markets for it, so that has really been put on hold. And we are applying for a grant to possibly establish a household hazardous waste collection facility, potentially at the Bennington Transfer Station that would be open between April and October, at least one day a month, so that people could bring their materials to that facility rather than having to wait forty to forty-five minutes in line to have someone come and take the facility, take the materials out of your car. So this does need to be, the new amended agreement needs to be signed. You can vote to authorize the chair to sign. That is perfectly fine, and that's what I'm asking for tonight.
Excellent. Alright, so would someone, let's see, would someone like to make a motion to accept the new Bennington County Solid Waste Alliance inter-local contract?
I'll move that and allow you to sign it.
I think we, oh.
Can that be rolled?
Yeah, and I'll second.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? Alright, all in favor then, let's vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Alright, great. Thank you. Any?
Thank you.
For, for Stuart? I have one. On boards and commissions. So I'm, I'm wondering, oh, Jean, you have your hand up.
No, 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 go ahead, go ahead.
Um, I'm wondering if we know, if we gotten any, any letters of, of interest for the, for boards and commissions?
Yes, they have been coming in. Not as, not as fast as I expected, but they are coming in, as you indicated earlier, that we're looking to close out the letter receipts by the fourteenth, which is towards the end of this week, I believe. And we'll have a packet ready for you. You folks have talked about interviewing new applicants in some form, most likely via Zoom unfortunately, but that's probably the only way at the present time. And then, so we'll break it out with new applicants for the various boards and commissions and the incumbents who are seeking reappointment. So that I figured on the May twenty-fourth agenda, we might be able to make some appointments from, for those incumbents who are seeking reappointment that you wish to reappoint. And perhaps we can set up some time next week to maybe do some interviews. If, depending on your avail- availability and availability of those that are applying. We do have some new applicants. We do have some openings. At least two incumbents are stepping down, one from the D R B and I believe one from the Planning Commission. So there will be openings at least on those two committees and I, I can just, they're, they're coming in, but.
Okay. Okay, so we can check with you at the end of the week and see what we have, if it looks like we have enough candidates to fill the, the spots or if we need to add another cry for help. Okay, alright.
Okay. And just, just one last point that I want to make. I, I kind of touched on it earlier in the question about the opening of the senior center. We are, we are very seriously looking at reopening June one, that is the town offices. And that would probably include the senior center, those buildings that are publicly available to the public. Paul Dance Rose put together some really good suggestions for signage and building movements. We will most likely be restricting access through only one entrance so that we can control the movements in the building. We will be requiring masking. And we will be requiring social distancing. I know those things will be there until the governor tells us they're not. But at least people will be able to come into the building and do business with us. Hopefully beginning June one.
Great.
Miss Cross.
Great. Jean, you had a question?
Yeah, I was just wondering, Stu, I was looking, when I was reading the minutes, the groundwater reclassification item, we had asked you to write a letter to the legislature. I'm just assuming that's probably on hold. You were gonna, we've got.
I did, I, well, I, I sent, I sent a, an email to John Schmelzer and Chuck Schwur outlining your requests. They, they have received that. And in fact, for those of you who won't be attending their meeting tomorrow, because there's a public meeting tomorrow via Zoom, I believe, sponsor the D E C. They are looking at language which will isolate within that large area. They will, they will, they're looking at language that will not, not condemn wells that are now clean and have been for a time. I don't have the specific language right off the top of my head, but they are, they are looking to be incredibly flexible in the way they define the reclassification so that those homeowners who have clean wells will not be stigmatized with the, with the groundwater reclassification. But I, I, I know that Al Bisheskin has been in conversation with John Speltzer about that, and that, that appears to be moving forward. It appears to have the blessing of the higher-ups in the D E C. And they also continue to acknowledge that it would be ideal if some of the recovery monies could be spent connecting those who want to connect to municipal water and who can, from an engineering perspective, connect to municipal water, that they'd be able to do so. And very much in favor of that as well.
Okay, thanks, thanks for doing that. Any other comments on managers' report? Nope. Okay.
Thank you.
Seeing none, then just upcoming agenda. So what we know about on the May twenty-fourth meeting agenda is the BBC has a presentation on next year's work plans and budget. We have a discussion on proposal for what we're calling Safety and Equity Board, but who knows what the name will be. We have the sidewalk discussion with the hot mix, right, versus?
That's, yes.
Yes.
Yes, we'll, we should be ready for that.
Okay, and I know there are a couple, there are a couple other things in the works that haven't.
Well, we'll also have the second reading of the body-worn camera.
We will have a second reading, and, and who knows, maybe we'll have a first reading on another. Yeah? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, so that's what I know. Okay, so other business. Anyone have anything they want to share? Jean?
Sorry. I just want to thank everyone who picked up garbage last weekend. I did. It was disgusting, as it always is, but very gratifying to see all those green bags lining the streets. And I'm going to say it again, wouldn't it be wonderful if we didn't need Green Up Day? And the other thing, I, I, I'm really, really happy to hear about Hazmat Day. That's just really encouraging that people are getting rid of their has, hazmat stuff in a safe way instead of just, you know, dumping it somewhere. So I find that very encouraging.
And, and we had people from all over the county. It was fantastic. We had people from Stanford, Sandgate, Dorset, Manchester, and yet we also have two more events coming this year. One in Reedsboro that will deal with the counties that are kind of over the mountain from us. And then there will be one in September, I believe, out at the Dorset School, which would be really to focus on the Northshire, but we had fantastic turnout. It was a very long day.
Maybe we could, maybe we could have a vaccine clinic there each.
You know, I thought, I thought about that, Jean, as soon as I saw the line of cars. I thought, jeez, I should have talked to the health department about getting up here. I'm not sure they would have been ready for all of that.
Bruce?
Yeah, my hand is up. As a regular user of Stark Street Playground, I just wanted to say how much I appreciated the new sign that is up there that's been posted. It's really colorful. It explains a lot and and that that, I want, I will say that that park is getting a lot of use throughout the day. So I encourage folks to go up and, and explore it, particularly with little kids. And I, I'm the keeper of a little kid for now on Thursdays, so you can expect to see me there. Thank you, everybody who was involved in that.
Sarah, you're up.
I just wanted to mention, you mentioned Green Up Day, and I just wanted to mention this grassroots effort called Clean the Streets of Bennington that's out there and started up. And I just wanted to mention that also on a happy, also another happy note, I got to see my mom and my dad for the first time in quite some time. We're all vaccinated and I got hugs. So a little, an uplifting boost there, and I've got a bigger smile than normal now. So yeah, it was, it was a good weekend for me.
That's really great, Sarah. That's really great. Okay, any, anyone else? I see, oh no, that's Sarah's, that's Sarah. Okay. So, alright, so with that, I think we're moving into executive session. So we have need of an executive session this evening to discuss a personnel matter. We do not intend to take action when we come out. So we will say goodbye to viewers and see you on the next meeting on May twenty-fourth. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So move.
Second.
Alright, all voting aye, please do so. Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Please say no. Any abstentions? Alright, so.